Okay, good afternoon and welcome to a meeting of the Journal Star Editorial Board. The first of a number of them that we'll be having during the course of January as we interview candidates for the at-large Peoria City Council position ahead of the February 26th general primary. We have with us today Aaron Chess, one of the candidates for that at-large position, as well as Executive Editor Dennis Anderson. I'm Associate Editor Chris Kerrigard, and we also have Managing Editor Sally McKee with us. Aaron, I want to start off nice and easy, having us hear a little bit about who you are and what it is that made you decide to run for council.
All right. I was born and raised on the south side of Peoria to a single mother who played the role as both mother and father due to my father and my older brother and sister father not being in the picture. And so, all my life growing up, I never seen or heard my mom complain about anything. But as I got older, I knew there were things that like, it was hard for her to provide, but she always provided for me and my older brother and sister. It's, I've been interested in politics for quite some time. Back in 2007, when President Obama, then Senator Obama announced that he's going to run for president, that was just courage and hope right there at that moment. I said, you know, that can be me someday. Not having a father figure, a role model in my community, it was hard to find someone to look up to. And President Obama was my role model growing up. Despite what people think of his politics, he helped me get to where I'm at today, just by seeing him, how he handled situations under pressure and how he makes sure his image is always nice and neat. And I graduated from Richwoods in 2015 and currently at Western. And I decided to run for city council a little after everyone else tossed their hat in the ring. I just felt that it was a time for a new face, a new vision for Peoria. Because for too long, Peoria citizens have been constantly given broken promises and just discouraged. And every time I talk to a citizen, they tell me they haven't voted in 10 or 20 years because what's the point if my voice doesn't matter? And I find this election as a chance for me to uplift those spirits that have been at a low point for too long and encourage them that a fresh new face and a fresh vision is coming from Peoria. But we can't do it without getting the people out to vote and that your vote not only matters in a presidential election, but it matters in local elections. Because as you can see, the situation that our city is dealing with, a bad economy, lack of jobs and such things. So when we don't get out to vote, these are the consequences. And I want to make sure, I want to work with my potential colleagues to make sure that we can get Peoria out of the hole and thrive once again.
Yeah, I saw you were, you worked with Congressman Bustos. Did that help you come to the decision to run for city council?
Oh yeah, I interned for her when she first ran back in 2012 and just getting that experience of how political campaign is. And fast forward about six, seven years later, I'm doing my first campaign, which seeing her, how she did on the campaign trail really motivates me to keep doing what I'm doing.
How are you balancing the time? You know, you're a student and you know, that, that takes a lot of time as well as the going door to door and meeting potential constituents and talking to them about issues. How are you managing that?
It's been a tough nut, but this semester, I managed to switch over to online courses, which allows for me to be here in Peoria and interacting with the voters and on the campaign trail. And so, during my off time, I'm dedicated to my schoolwork and then during my, the day, handling the campaign business.
Is this your last semester?
This is my, I've got one more.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I want to dive into some of the issues here a little bit on some of the things that we've identified as priorities in the city. And some of that begins with trying to revitalize some of those older areas of town on the East Bluff and the North Valley and the South End. And how would you deal with trying to achieve more homeownership there in dealing with the vacant properties, the vacant lots and the lack of businesses in those areas? What would be the plans that you would try to bring to the city council for consideration to fix those problems?
Okay, so I got a firsthand experience with me living on the south side, seeing lack of businesses and vacant homes and things. And as a councilman, I'm going to do my best to encourage more homeowners, more renters to, you know, become homeowners. As you can tell, when you go on the south side or the East Bluff, the homes are in terrible conditions because of slum lords. There are men and women that rent out their homes and, you know, have due to job. And what I want to encourage, instead of getting your job, getting your homes have done, you can, you can take the full responsibility, become a homeowner, and you can fix your house up the way you want to and not how the slum lord wants it to be. And for the vacant lots, I encourage, I believe that we should start to hold the slum lords accountable for letting their properties, the grasses grow extensive lengths. Because that, that right there, that decides if a business wants to open up in a community. So for instance, like the south side, there's, there's lack of businesses because the homes and the community itself is, is just like no one cares. And I feel like I can just, I want to uplift everyone to, you know, take pride in your community. Because at the end of the day, we're all citizens, no matter if it's the south side, the east side, or the north bluff or whatsoever. If we want our community to do well, we have to, we have to take pride ourselves and make the first action.
How would you go about doing that in terms of getting loans out there and people who need a loan? And how would you make sure that people were able to get that?
I know that there are grants and as a councilman, working with the colleagues and the officials in City Hall to get grants or working with the community development to help ensure that we're able to do that.
And one of the other concerns has been access to jobs and even job or business development in those areas of town. Because as you noted, one of the challenges is being able to afford, being able to buy rather than, than rent. How do, how do we work to attract more businesses to a south Peoria or a north valley?
And this is something when I first decided to run. And I've always been a supporter of small businesses. Every corporation starts as a small business. And so, we got to encourage our citizens to invest in a business, work with them to ensure that they're, they have the training and the qualifications to open up shop, to bring revenue to the, to the communities and to the city.
Now, the city offers a program they call One Stop Shop through community development and economic development to help people have access to all the pieces the city provides in terms of help with those sorts of things. Are there any improvements that you think ought to be made to that program or different programs that you would suggest the city should be looking to on, on small business development?
I myself, I'm still looking into the One Stop Program. I think it's a great program, but as time goes on, we will see what we can do. Not just me, but if I, when I am elected to city council, working with my colleagues and other officials to see what improvements can we make to the program.
One of the biggest concerns that's related to the under, underdevelopment of those areas of the community that we've been talking about, you know, it has come out in this perpetual listing that Peoria seems to be on of the worst communities or worst regions in the country for African Americans to live in. What more do you think the city specifically or other people in town, maybe who aren't affiliated with City Hall, need, what steps do you think they need to be taking to improve those conditions? And I want to ask as a corollary to that, how do you do some outreach and try to make somebody who doesn't live in those underdeveloped areas of the community, how do you make somebody who doesn't live there care and want to put their time and effort into improving those portions and the city as a whole because of it?
So, like you said, Peoria is ranked as the, one of the worst places for African Americans. And I say, not only should City, City Hall worry about this issue, but as a community, we have leaders, activists, we have neighborhood associations. Just our, the leaders, our local leaders around Peoria, like our community activists, I feel as if, you know, everybody wants to do what they want to do. And you know, sometimes you just gotta, you gotta just follow the lead of someone else, put all your ideas together, sit down at a table like we're doing right now and decide what is best for our communities and not, I'm going to do it my way, you're going to do it your way. But if we all come together and talk about what we want to do and how can we achieve the goal of taking Peoria off that, that list, it all, it all starts with sitting down and talking and discussing the details and having short-term goals and long-term goals.
What's, what's your first goal there? What's job one for you in that respect? If you're elected to the council and you're pushing for everybody to get down at that table, what's the first thing you're going to be asking for them to look at?
First thing we look at is, why are we, I believe we're number five now? Why are we number five? And what can we do as a community to ensure that when the next study comes out, that we're not even in the top 10? So, pinpoint ideas of, okay, we can do such and such to improve. I know for instance, jobs, getting African American males, they're, they, the things that they are, they need are jobs. Jobs, they don't want to settle for less and having to work at a minimum wage job because it doesn't pay enough. And so, something that I want to encourage the local leaders and community leaders to do is looking into how can we get more trades and apprenticeship programs for second, for second chance people that have, are coming back into society from jail or prison to allow for them to get in, like, get inside, get into the workplace and actually work and having that training, let's say for carpentry or plumbing or engineering or mechanics so they can, they can have that training and that knowledge, those skills, and open up their own business.
The city had a rough budget season recently. Increased, added to fees, they've cut several jobs in especially police fire. What, watching that, what you, would you have done differently or do you think the city did what they needed to do?
I think something that I would have done differently and encouraged the other members on the council to do is to actually have town hall discussions about the budgets and getting their input, because community input is important. And when you're dealing with a budget, you know, someone's not going to walk away from the table happy. And I'm not a fan of the cuts that happened to our public safety pension, our public safety budget as a whole. I feel like that's the last thing on the budget that should be touched with because, you know, those men and women put their lives on the line every day to ensure our safety and we need those services. And so, what I would do is look into areas that, resources that we don't use as much, like voluntary training for different departments. If it's not required, I feel as if we should cut back on them. But if it's a required training, then so be it. We, we send them to the training, but you know, we got to, got to start being more conservative with our money and transparent, letting the people know where our money, our earned taxpayer dollars are going to and what programs are they supporting.
Dennis alluded to one of those fees that was put on, the, the public safety pension fee, and they put an expiration clause in that at the end of 2021, it goes away, or in 2021, it goes away. Obviously, the obligation to continue to fund that is still there. If the money that they're, they're raising goes away then during your council term, you're going to have to find some other way to put those millions of dollars into covering the cost of, of public safety pensions for police and firefighters. Where do you look for that? Do you extend this fee? Do you find a different fee instead? Do you raise property taxes to pay for it? What, what's on the table for you and what's not?
One thing that's not on the table for me is property taxes. Property taxes, from a personal experience, I see my mother struggling with it, especially in the lower poverty neighborhoods. There are families that aren't fortunate enough to keep, keep up with the payments of the property fees. And so, that discourages them and takes more money out of their pocket, the little money that they have. So that's, that's the one thing that I wouldn't want to do. But that, that'd be something that, it'd be, take time to look into. I don't want to give you an answer and sugarcoat and tell you something that I'm not going to do. It's all about communication. And that's what our city, city has been failing to do is communicate with one another, the council members to communicate and decide this is what we should do to ensure that we don't have this situation. But I think we should extend the fee.
As far as economic development, you, you expressed some concerns with the way the city has handled economic development as well as small business economic development. Broadly speaking, what do you think the city needs to do better? And then I want to talk about some of the specifics of it after.
Okay. I say, Peoria is known as one of the anti-friendly business cities. And so, if we, if we want to, you know, compete with East Peoria or Galesburg or any surrounding cities, we have to, we have to sit down with our, our business leaders around a community and actually communicate and not just taxing them, taxing them, taxing them. Decide, we got to negotiate. Negotiations are a big deal for when deciding a budget or fees.
How much, what do you think the council members ought to be doing that they aren't in terms of looking into or doing due diligence on projects before, before they approve them? We talked a little in the questionnaire about the, the problems with the paramarquette, but you know, there's been a lot of criticism of developer giveaways on, on projects. What, what should council members be looking more closely at before they approve a project?
So, during my journey around the city with the campaign, the, the city council members, the citizens that I talked to, you got a nickname for them. They're called bank loaners. Because it seems as if, you know, we keep lending money to development projects and we're not actually looking into how is this going to affect our city long-term. We fail to have long-term goals, we keep short-term, short-term, short-term. But you know, you got to think about the future. What can we do to ensure that this, this development project can keep bringing in revenue and not spending money that we don't have and keep going into the red and increasing the taxes? Because year after year, we're, we're steadily investing in failed projects and if they haven't seen it now, it's time to wake up and see that, you know, we should really start researching before we invest our money into projects.
One of the biggest problems facing the city right now is pensions and paying the pensions, the obligations that we have. What have you been doing, what ideas you have on, well, how going forward, how we can make that more manageable in order to be able to pay all those bills that they're going to come due soon, or come due now?
That's a, that's a very good question. I would say that the hospitals, for example, don't pay a property tax. And worst case scenario, that we possibly might have to tax, but that's something that I want to do. But that's, you have to look into all scenarios.
And hospitals would be exempt under state law from property tax. So you would have to, have to change state law for not-for-profits in order to, to get that done. Are you willing to take that on, try and get state to change that law?
I don't, that's, that's, that's a different, that's a different, that's a different field over there in Springfield. So I don't want to make any enemies in Springfield.
But that's not an opportunity, you can't do that.
Yeah.
So what, where else would you look to make sure that you're handling the pension obligations that aren't affecting, the reasons why we have new fees or taxes have been raised or we've cut positions is because of the pensions? How would you, how would you handle that going forward? The question you're going to have to answer.
Yeah. Yeah. That's something I can't give you a direct answer to right now, because I don't want to, again, tell you something that I cannot do. It's something I will still have to look into and, yeah.
One of the biggest complaints you're going to get if you're elected is not necessarily about the pensions or the economic development or even Peoria's position on the 24/7 Wall Street list. It's going to be about potholes.
Oh yeah.
And, and city infrastructure. And a couple of years back, the city consciously raised its property tax fees on citizens to help do some additional reconstruction on, on its roads, which has gotten us to the great point that we are today with, with roads in Peoria. I.e., people still complain about them a heck of a lot because there's still a lot of work to do. What do you think needs to be done as far as, again, more taxes, more fees, cuts elsewhere to pay for, for more, more repaving or sooner repaving on, on city roads? Or is that just not something that the city can handle?
I think that's a sole responsibility of our city is to make sure our infrastructure is maintained. Again, deciding the budget, nobody's going to walk away happy with whatever happens. So, there are going to be programs, like you got to look into the programs that aren't, aren't doing as well. From here, you can look into reports of years past, how have, how has this, this department or this agency, how have they done better than 10 years prior? Look into that.
Okay. And what else do we want to? Well, what are things that are on your agenda that you'd like to see happen in the next four years? Would, if you could prioritize them, two, three things?
Yeah. So one thing is infrastructure for sure. That's, there's been a lot of concerns about the roads. We got to have a long-term goal to help maintain the roads. And because if we want to attract businesses, you got to have decent roads and decent infrastructure to allow for those businesses to come in. When you, you look at a city like New York or Chicago or LA, the roads aren't that bad. The roads are, you know, presentable, businesses, they feel as if, okay, if the road, if you have potholes every mile or so, they're not going to want to invest. Because that, that's a lack of business coming their way because of the risk of someone tire, getting ruined or their car getting damaged because of the potholes.
Is there another thing, another issue?
And...
Very important to you?
Yeah. And as I touched on earlier, with the programs like apprenticeships and vocationals, allowing more trainers, doing things like that to allow men and women that are coming back into society or men and women that have graduated high school but not choose to take that college route. Because either they can't afford college or college isn't for them. Finding a way to allow for them to live with a stable wage instead of having to work at a minimum wage job.
If you're elected a member of the city council, you're going to have one employee that reports directly to you. What's your assessment of the, the work that the city manager has been, been doing so far? Is he doing a good job? Are there areas that you see that he could improve?
I, I say, with the city hall itself, we need more transparency. We need to know about the things that are going on. There's too many backdoor deals. There's so much going on that the public is left uninformed about. And so, I want to help make sure that we have more transparency, that the people actually know what is going on and not be surprised at a city council meeting when the agenda's already brought up. So more community input and having, having the city manager do more town hall discussions and community input so he can hear what the community thinks. Because at the end of the day, we're paying for the projects as taxpayers. We're, we're, we're paying the fees. And so, we just need more transparency from not only the city manager, but the mayor and the council.
And some of that certainly falls on, on the council members as well. One of the councilmen who's retiring has, for the last 10-plus years, done an event every month as an open house meeting at City Hall to talk about issues. Is that the type of thing that you would commit yourself to right now to, for, for the sake of transparency, to do, do open town hall meetings with, with citizens to hear their concerns?
The thing about that, I wouldn't have the meetings at City Hall. I want to actually get into the communities where, where I'll be representing and hear and see what the, my constituents are dealing with. Not just having them in for coffee, but actually saying, this is what's happening when we vote this way or vote this way.
Okay. What sort of time commitment are you looking at or is your perception of the, the city council position? About how many hours a week do you think is going to be involved in, in doing the work?
I know that it's part-time right now, but for me personally, I feel as if I can do more than part-time. Not, I don't need the extra benefits or whatsoever. This is something I'm passionate about, to help and make sure that the city that made me into the man I am can strive once again and that the citizens of Peoria can sleep well at night.
So how many hours do you think in a week?
30, 40.
Full-time job.
Yeah.
And that, that's what we hear from, from most council members is that they have to put in that amount of time in, in terms of responding to constituent feedback and those kinds of things, which, and let me ask you this from a philosophical standpoint, as a council member, you would have access to more, more information on a subject than most citizens typically would unless they were really, you know, getting full in on an issue. You would have access to all the city documents and the briefings and talking with people beforehand, even confidential information on personnel matters. How would you handle an issue where your constituents, your constituent phone calls are coming in 80% against something, but based on the information you're looking at, you're leaning on being for whatever that thing is? How do you make that decision between what, what you believe to be the, the choice and what your constituents are telling you they want the choice to be?
That's, that's the name of the game, politics, you know? Not everybody's going to be happy with what decisions you make. And for me, I'm a very religious person and so I rely a lot when I'm making the big decisions. I pray to God to instill with me with the courage and the wisdom to make these decisions that are going to affect my constituents.
What other issues are there out there that, that you think aren't being talked about in the campaign that you wish were being talked about?
So about three, three weeks ago, I went to the crime scene of the 20th homicide that occurred two days before Christmas. And so, I feel as if gun violence is not an issue that has been talked about in Peoria. Constantly, our numbers are getting up into above 18, 18, 20 homicides a year. And unfortunately, I lost my sister to homicide. And this is the reason why I want to run, to help ensure that no family has to go through what my family went through.
What can, what can the city be doing better to prevent homicides? What can the city be doing better to prevent homicides?
I'd say, not just the city, but it all goes back to communities. Our young men and women, they just need someone to talk to. And so mental health is something that our young men and women are struggling with. They feel as if they cannot express their concerns or anything with a person, because they feel as if they cannot relate to them. And so I feel like we should push more for mental health awareness. Even being at college, that is something that we dedicate a whole month for. And it's sad if we look around our country, that's the main issue, gun violence and mental health. And I feel, as us, the citizens of Peoria, and as officials of this city, we can spearhead a movement to help ensure that we're bringing awareness to the issues of mental health.
Sorry to hear about your sister and to learn about that. How did this, when that happened, how did the city interact with you and your family? How did that go with some police and anybody else, council people?
My mother received your letter, the letter from State Representative Jahan Gordon Booth. But pretty much, and then you heard your, "I'm sorry for your loss" and whatsoever, your status code script that everyone says, but it's gotten to a point that, you know, enough is enough. There, our children are dying. Young kids ages eight, seven, six. Just young children, when it gets to the point that our own kids came and go outside, you know it's something wrong. We got to really look in the mirror and ask ourselves, how can we sleep at night knowing that little Jalen or little Ashley or little Kiamber, that they don't feel safe in their neighborhoods? How can we better ensure that they're safe in the communities? And that goes on to something else. Another, one of my main points on my campaign platform is diversity, community relations with the police. I was a police explorer when they first brought the program back. And I know there's been a lot of tension with the community and the police. And I know that those men and women, they gotta make tough decisions. And there's some things that, you know, the community don't know, that when an officer puts on that badge, they're risking their lives every night when they leave home. And so, and with a community, you have young black men and women. When I spoke at Mayo, they told me that what they fear is being killed by the police because they have a backpack. My little cousin told me he don't even want to wear a backpack anymore, because, you know, he's afraid that he'll get shot because of what he's seeing on the news and things. So I know not all of our cops are bad people. And I want to help ensure that we bring more community relations with the police and our boys and girls of each community, to ensure that, you know, they're not there to be the bad guys. They want to help all of us.
Very good. We traditionally close this with the same question for everybody, which is, you know, people have a choice to make on the 26th, and if you make it through the primary, they'll have another choice to make on April 2nd. Why you and instead of the other 15 folks?
The citizens of Peoria should elect me their next councilman, because for too long, we've had failed leadership, no transparency, old vision, no new vision, the same old, same old. And I'm not being pushed by any political party or no one. I'm doing this for passion. As you heard a little bit of my story with losing my sister, that is, that are, these are things that everyday people are dealing with. And we need more everyday people running for office. People that actually have to deal with the effects of taxes or the legislation that's put into effect. Because at the end of the day, we're hurt by it. And so it takes someone to know how the everyday person feels instead of someone that is out of touch with the people. And so if you're looking for a community leader and someone that you can relate to, I'm your guy, and I'm going to do you a heck of a job by being your councilman.
All right. Thank you very much, Aaron Chess, and good luck to you in the election.
Thank you so much.